Meeting of June 1st, everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen to that. Okay, Maureen, do you want to do a roll call? Okay, let's go.
Ms. Daly. Andrea Lou Millard. And Josie.
Here.
Zigma.
There.
And Rogan.
Here.
Herman Veely.
Here.
And Hamel. Eviella Junior.
Here.
Don Deacon.
Here.
Have a forum.
All right, thank you. First item is going to be the review and approval of the minutes for May 18th. At the time present was Ms. Daly, Ms. Millard, Ms. Josie, Mr. Zigma, Mr. Rogan, myself, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Biella, and Mr. Deacon. Have we all had a chance to review the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Okay, motion to approve by Ms. Josie.
My second.
Second by Andrea Millard. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me Chairman.
Did some, yes.
Do you have the revised agenda in front of you?
Uh, yeah, the roll call. Okay, well, we just hopped around a little bit, but we can come back and we have a motion for, we have a motion for it to go into executive session, which is the next item on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session inviting both our town staff and our town attorney with us.
Okay.
Second.
Terrific, second by Ms. Josie. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, and now it is 7:11. Yep, yeah, you gotta step out unfortunately.
So can you share the screen with something that says the commission's in executive session and it's pretty. Yeah, that's the problem is I don't want it recording accidentally to somebody else, that's the. He's on one of the applicants.
Yeah, we already have the motion to come out of executive session, so here we go. Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you. I hate that.
We do have a motion.
Okay, go ahead Diane.
Okay, so I will make a motion. Are we good?
Alright.
And we're recording again?
Yeah, we are recording, yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion to amend the agenda to add reconsideration of the commission's May 18th, 2023 decision on whether to receive the two-part application of 1906 Berlin LLC, including the proposed zone text amendment for new section 11 EE planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component, prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC, and the site plan application for Sprucebrook Apartments of Patrick Snow, 1906 Berlin LLC, at 1906 Berlin Turnpike for demolition of all existing structures and pavement is proposed by infilling, grading, construction of multifamily structures, various underground utilities and paved parking areas.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Josie, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we have further discussion on the motion? All right, so calling the motion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, aye. All right.
I have another.
And now, go ahead, please.
I have another motion to amend the agenda to add reconsideration of the commission's May 18th, 2023 decision on whether to receive the two-part application of Little House Living LLC for a zone text amendment to create new section 11 planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC, and the site plan application of the bungalows at 1676 Berlin Turnpike for a 20-unit multifamily residential community.
Okay, we have most of my Ms. Josie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan. Further discussion, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. So moved.
Okay, I have another motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a motion to rescind the May 18th, 2023 decision of the commission to not receive the application for proposed zone text amendment for new section 11 EE planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC, and site plan application of Sprucebrook Apartments of Patrick Snow, 1906 Berlin LLC, at 1906 Berlin Turnpike for demolition of all existing structures and pavement is proposed followed by infill grading, construction and multifamily structures, various underground utilities and paved parking areas. I should clarify that the motion to the most, the original motion, we should note that for the record, the motion was voted upon to receive two applications with which the motion failed to carry. So we are now moving to rescind that decision and receive the applications.
Okay, we have the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan, further discussion on that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. So moved.
I have another motion.
Okay.
I will make a motion to rescind the May 18th, 2023 decision of the commission to not receive the application for zone text amendment to create new section 11 planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component, prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC, and site plan application for the bungalows at 1676 Berlin Turnpike for a 20-unit multifamily residential community. Note that the motion was voted upon, the motion that was voted upon was to receive the two applications which the motion failed to carry. So I am now moving to rescind that decision and receive these applications.
Okay, so we have the motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, further discussion, then all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
I have another motion, so moved.
Did you vote Jim? I know, Tim? I think he's muted, that's why. Is he, is he muted?
No, I'm not, yep.
Okay, we're not hearing your vote.
Okay.
All right.
I voted in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything?
Yes. Motion now for scheduling of a public hearing for the proposed zone text amendment for new section 11 EE planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component, prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC.
All right, is there a suggested date for the public hearing?
That one must have been next.
Yes.
Okay.
Lenses and reading glasses, contact lenses. So 1906 application should be open prior to July or by the July 6th meeting or July 8th. There are minus 65 days prior to the July 6th meeting.
So moved.
All right, so the public hearing is being suggested to be open on July 6th. So do we have, we have a motion for that, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion on this, then all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
I have a motion to schedule for a public hearing. Site plan application Sprucebrook Apartments of Patrick Snow, 1906 Berlin LLC, at 1906 Berlin Turnpike for demolition of all existing structures and pavement proposed followed by filling grading, construction of multifamily structures, various underground utilities and paved parking areas. Is that also recommended for July 6th?
So at the pleasure of the commission, if we would want to hear the application together, however, I would suggest the complexity of the review that, that those applications doesn't need to be opened until July 22nd and you have a meeting on July 20th. So I suggest the July 20th date. And it will also provide the opportunity to be addressed.
So the motion is to schedule that public hearing for July 20th?
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all the, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, so moved.
All right. I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for zone text amendment to create new section 11 planned residential infill development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or work for, workforce housing component prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire Alter &amp; Pearson LLC. You have a suggested date for that, this is for 1676.
I would suggest the same date of July 20th. Yeah, July 20th.
Okay, we have a.
So the motion would be for July 20th?
Yeah, I think motion July 20th. Second on that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed?
I have two clarifications to make that as far as that text amendment goes. The it's my understanding when he submitted that we haven't completely reviewed that yet. But the second application for 19, for 1676, we got an amendment to the originally proposed text from 1906. And I think it results in them both being the same. So we'll have to figure that out in May just then. Or sweep that all into the one.
Okay.
Original hearing, if that's the case.
So that would still be on the 20th of July?
Because you're hearing that text, if it's the same text, you'd be really hearing that.
So.
Sorry, that's just.
1676 would be on this. 1676 would be on this.
Text amendment, public hearing. We propose July 20th.
What may end up, the, the reality of it may be that it is the same.
It's solidated to the.
Already considering.
Oh, okay. Should they both be on the same? Start on the 6th. Scheduled for two separate.
The site plan followed the tasks on the same day.
It's a separate thing.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what, and, and where's.
Okay. I'm confused, did we actually accept that? We accepted that?
20 for that.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't make it clear, I was trying to forewarn you of that, not mess up the motion.
Okay, and we didn't finish the vote, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
So my motion is for a public hearing to be scheduled for July 20th?
Okay, we have a motion for the 20th of July?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan for the discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Okay.
And lastly, I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application, the bungalows at 1676 Berlin Turnpike for a 20-unit multifamily residential community.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
We need a date.
A date, I'm sorry.
Again, July 20th?
For July 20th?
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Josie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan for the discussion, and all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. That's that?
I have one other item or another twist with regard to that. I believe jokes about all of you attended the Land use on the bar for celebration, Land use law seminar on that Saturday.
We don't remember it, but yeah, we were there.
Um, you, you may recall, but one of the recommendations in there is that a commission decides whether or not to hire a consultant for review of 830G applications. And that it was recommended in that Land use law seminar. And it is allowed by Berlin zoning regulations for a technical and legal assistance. And it is also allowed in the connected house, actually F1C. I ask you to consider whether or not one has to go through a consultant to review the application.
Be a motion on that or just? Struggle?
You need to know.
I'll make a motion that we hire a consultant. Or each of.
Yeah, hang on, wait, wait for the second. Okay.
Shall I state them again?
No, I don't think so.
I will second that.
Okay, now is the time for discussion. Andrea, you would not want a question?
Did we hire a consultant for the H2O? No, we didn't? I thought we had, I thought we had a consultant come in on that one.
I can't remember.
We did for the Berlin turn.
Adios, DTV zones.
Yeah, the Adio we did.
New zones and for the 550, 554. So you were the two that we hired.
And with the. And the consultant would be someone chosen by the town? And who pays for the consultant?
The applicant. Provides funds at one and a half times the estimated cost that the consultant provides to the town. They give us an estimate. And that is borne by the app. By just one and a half times and then the leftover is the applicant.
Okay, all right, did you make the motion?
I made the motion Brian.
Brian, second, further discussion, any other questions, then all those in favor?
Aye. Those. Aye.
Those opposed, so moved.
Excuse me Chairman, Chairman woman, I have to leave the meeting. See you from Fairfax, Virginia.
Alrighty, talk to you later, drive carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so moved, the, the time is going to be 8:55. And that he's exiting the meeting, okay, so that means Mr. Deacon. Okay, oh wait a minute, I still have Steve Biella, because I sat you last time. Steve, can you stand in for Tim? Can you stand in for Tim Zigma? And finish the meeting with us?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, terrific, all right. And I'm sorry about that, it's just I sat you last time. Okay, so now we move on to the request for bond reductions. Am I in the right spot now?
Yes.
Okay, we have the request to Pat Snow for the release of the erosion and sediment bond on Finisher's Court, which is located at 319 Main Street here in East Berlin. Is the, is the work completed to, to allow for any release?
Yes, today we did get a correspondent from James Farble, Deputy Director of Public Works, who reviewed the requests. And it's in your supplement, his email is in your supplemental package. And both bonds may be released.
Okay, so both bonds are good to go.
I am making a motion to release both bonds.
Okay, motion by Ms. Josie, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hamel, excuse me. Further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, so moved. Thank you Steve. All right, request of Pat Snow for the release of the site plan, a site bond, Finisher's Court, 319 Main Street, East Berlin. And how's that look? That looks pretty awesome.
So in the same email, he responded, he replied for both.
Yep, okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to release the bond for Finisher's Court.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All right, to scheduling a public hearings, we have a subdivision application of M, of M Convern Owitz for three residential, I know I did poorly with that name, three residential lots at MAP 11-1, block 127, lot 16235, Weathersfield Road, I guess the suggested 722, are we stacking up too much there?
No, actually, I had originally rejected the first meeting in July for the suggested date, so the July 6th.
All right, so that'll be.
Recommended.
All right.
Move to schedule public hearing for July 6th.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Ms. Josie, second by Mr. Rogan, further discussion? And all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, thank you. New business site plan application of PDS Sarafino Calafiore, PDS Engineering and Construction Incorporated for a proposed 7,250 square foot addition with parking lot expansions, MAP 4-3, block 81, lot 3A400, Christian Lane, and we have to decide this by July 7th. All right, Bart. Hello, Mr. Bovee, how are you this evening? Sorry to keep you waiting so long. Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, that's what they all say. Until I get out in the parking lot and they say, can't you kind of sign those meetings?
Property is owned by JTV Real Estate Associates. It is the home of Delmar Products, Delmar Products located on the front porch in approximately four and a half, or four points or acres, it's a relatively clean site, manufacturing site. They've got parking and loading on there, what they want to do is add a small 7,250 square foot addition to the rear of their property. They were trying to bring the parking up to conformance with present standard, the parking chart and plans of which we've amended based on Dylan's review of the plan. Up into this portion, we're proposing approximately 16 spaces. We have an additional 20, or faces in the back, which would bring our total count up to eight spaces. But we're looking for those rear spaces to be deferred at this time, showing that it's adequately parking area. As I said, the site is along the Willbrook. The sludway and flood fringe involved with it, we went to the Wells Commission on this. We got our approval on drainage of the smaller, somewhere in the pension area here. That balances out and gives us a zero input. The commission's concern was some outbuildings there in the back portion of property. There's existing lawnmower operation that's been operating there for at least 30 years and the photographs that I've seen. The outbuildings are located on the back of the site are going to be relocated to the side and then the same quantity back in the back of the building is going to be floodproofed. We can't actually move the plan. So what we're going to do is propose a flood proof, an open of a back door, or remove everything above the elevation so the building works and it's not going to be subject to flooding and that was satisfactory with the Wells Commission. So we've got the front parking in the, in the front, the existing parking from the site. We're proposing parking along the side here with a loading area up on the building. There was a little confusion as to building elevations and my clients were assured that this was brought in, but I didn't get to.
Thank you.
Reduced copies, if you just want to pass those through. Let you look on the cover sheet, but you get a copy of it. She's got full copies. You got a full set of plans, but she's got a full set, full. I'm spending, this is paid for my dinner money, this is. You'll see from the floor plan that the addition is in the, on the right-hand side of the floor plan and it's better, it's labeled as warehouse, there's one small bathroom, but essentially the entire addition will be a warehouse facility. And if you look on the second sheet of the plan, you'll see that there's some elevations. I, turn yourself to the west elevation, which is on the lower right-hand side. That's the site that you're seeing from the road. And you see, you won't even see the addition from the road, the addition's going to be tucked in the back of the site here. You're not even going to see the addition from the road. What you'll see on the west elevation is this extent of the addition coming out of the rear. Everything is really basically like I see in the back of the property. They're quite anxious to get going, they were kind of hoping to be on a little bit earlier, but we understand the commission's agenda. Water and sewer on the site, and Chris Edge here, we'd ask Chris to maybe say a couple words on our applicant's behalf.
Evening Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road in Berlin. I'm here to receive and speak on behalf of and support of the application of PDF for 400 Christian Lane, this company has been the home of Delmar Products, which is a family-owned manufacturing firm. Delmar Products has a custom sheet laminator, has business for over 50 years, they laminate sheet materials together utilizing many different materials. On a much cooler side, they've been supplying the music industry with pick guards, guitar picks and drum rack materials such as white pearl, black oyster pearl, turquoise, glass glitters, sparkles and PVC glosses. They've been supplying the music industry with pick guards, guitar picks and drum rack materials such as white pearl, black oyster pearl, turquoise, glass glitter, sparkles and PVC glosses. These are product names unique to the music industry that comes straight from Berlin on Christian Lane to a rock band near you. It's a quiet but amazing firm is looking to grow in town, create new career opportunities while expanding, and I would ask for your full support of this project.
Marine, and Dylan have photographs of this whole area. Uh, I don't know if you wanted to pop those elevations up, but they are.
Alright. He likes to play with the computer, so.
We did.
We did.
The addition is basically gonna be the same type here, and this is the back one here.
Alright.
The lower elevation. And that's all I have.
Alright.
Maureen, do you have anything for us on this?
Oh, um, I had noted in my staff comments that. Um, the town engineer had not provided comments yet, I did have a conversation with him today. He had looked at the plans, he was aware of the in the wetlands approval that happened on May second. For the plans, and he said that any concerns, he didn't have time to write up any concerns, but said that they can all be adjusted during permitting. Working with the applicant, if, if he finds any deeper dive. And that the other outstanding department comments, which I believe are again all during permitting. Which includes the building officials getting stamped MEP plans, et cetera, as he usually provides. And that the health district know old wells and oil tanks should be on site, and if they are, they should be abandoned properly. Um, the conservation commission did note that the, um, that there are, and as did we, that there are unsightly materials on site. And those should be, you know, cleaned up to the satisfaction of zoning staff. Or outside storage that is permitted. Wetland staff actually. Um, go back to that picture if you can. Right, you wanna see that last picture again?
Yeah, last picture, is that, uh, is that where the addition's going, or the?
Addition's going right there, right?
Alright, and then that's all gonna be parking and stuff, that's all gonna be cleaned up and parking? Alright, and then the?
Those outbuildings, you can see the closet hut, and then it's like a blueish outbuilding.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's all being relocated, that building right where the cursor is for there.
Okay.
Those all being relocated and being removed, so they're gonna be out of the floodway, and it's gonna clean that.
Okay, and the front of the building is nicely landscaped, right?
So, my recommendation with regard to that is that when those buildings are relocated. They be shown with dimensions on the plan as to their relocation, so that we can make sure that they are compliant.
Okay.
On the asphalt is, I'm as long as there.
Well.
Compliant.
How do you feel about the request of the deferral of the additional twenty spaces for the parking?
Um, I. Generally speaking, appreciate deferrals and not having paved land when, when the use finds they don't need it. Um, so therefore, if the applicant who runs this business knows that that's not the demand they have for their parking. Um, I. Blood. Um, making sure that there's a reverse, a reserved area. Um, and with the plan showing that the, that the demand of the zoning officer. When parking is found to be necessary, it gets involved. Just what is provided.
Well, actually, that's kind of a good way to do it, because then you can have a nice grassy knoll, or a green area, picnic tables, and especially if they find that they'll need it.
So then I will make the motion to approve with staff comment and the deferral of the additional twenty parking spaces.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rogan, do we have a second? Okay, do we have any further discussion? Um, so who got the second? I'll give it to Mr. Hamel. Uh, further discussion, all those in favor, aye, those opposed? Alright, thank you, alright, alright, you two. Uh, let me find my agenda so I can see where I am. Moving right along, site plan, uh, okay, site plan amendment application of Luke McCoy, PLA. Casto Booze Associates Incorporated for renovations to the Scaglio Field at Berlin High School thirteen. One thirty nine Patterson Way. Do we have anything on this?
So, Mr. McCoy is online, I think he's trying to make himself seen now, there we go.
There he is, hello, how are you?
Good.
Good, 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 alright, what do we have here? What are we doing? What do you need from us?
So if you remember, I was here about a month ago with Steve Woods in regards to this project for the eight dash two four. Uh, we're now back for the formal site plan application. Um, the overall project, uh, includes the conversion of the natural grass field within. The existing track at the high school to a synthetic turf field. Uh, as well as, uh, some work to the walkways leading up to, to make the facility ADA compliant. Um, outside of the field itself. Uh, the town is going to be installing concrete pads for the temporary. Or portable lighting that's used at the facility during the fall. Uh, for practices there. Um, as well as, um, potentially. A scoreboard depending on funding available at the end of the project. Um, but we do know, uh, and agree to that if the scoreboard is approved, we'd be back before you for a separate application to that. Uh, portion of the project. I know you have plans, I'm happy to share on the screen as well, and walk you through each of the parts if you'd like.
Well, I have a question about the lighting, cuz I know this is over at Sage Park, right? No?
No, this is at the high school.
At the high school, let's see how much I know about the local school system, isn't that a shame? Alright, I just wanna make sure that as far as the lighting goes, that it's aimed downward or shielded, so that, cuz you have that neighborhood all around there. Um, I just wanna make sure that that continues to be the practice.
So, yeah, and currently what they use is, is their portable lighting, um. Generator run, similar to what you'd see construction lighting. That they use for limited time, uh, for practices, and that's what their intent is to continue using. Um, with that, which will have, and be able to angle down towards the field. Um, not into the neighbor's, uh, property.
Okay, terrific, any other questions?
Would you like him?
Yeah.
Share his screen so that.
Sure.
So if you would share your screen, that would be great, you should be able to do that without just needing to. And you can walk quickly through.
Yeah. Alright. Just to familiarize, uh, everyone with the site, this is the current field. Uh, it's located right to the, uh, side of the high school, this is the, the high school. Uh, here, you have your tennis courts and basketball courts, and then this is the existing field that's going to be. Uh, renovated as part of this, but they are looking at, uh, as this project is the, um. Interior of the track, which is shown here in the darker green, will be converted to synthetic turf, uh, which will include. Um, some ball safety netting along the end line as well, uh, for sports such as soccer and lacrosse. Uh, to stop balls that, uh, go past the goal line. Um, and allow, uh, folks to use the track during practices, um, that are going on. The other, uh, important part of this project is the walkway, as I mentioned, currently this is an existing asphalt walkway. Where students access from the school, cross, crosswalk can come in. That current walkway is over five percent in slope, so it's not ADA compliant. Uh, we will be taking the existing, um, walkway out, regrading that and making sure. As part of this project, that it does fall below that required five percent for accessible egress to. Um, the track and field moving forward. As I mentioned, the, uh, lighting that they currently use, um, looking to put the concrete pads. So that they are, uh, sitting on those instead of on, um, either the lawn, or currently now they're actually. So when they use them, they set them up on the track, um, which has the potential to deteriorate the track. So they're looking to move them off and have them on, uh, pads when they do use them instead. Continue through as we had, um, talked through the, um, various, um, this is the proposed scoreboard. But as I mentioned, uh, if that is, um, chosen as part of the project during construction, there's funding available. Uh, that the contingency is not going to be used, we will come back before you, uh, for an approval on that. Um, but just to give you an idea what that would look like, it's a small, uh, multi-use boards, much smaller than the large. Uh, called Jumbotron that just went in Stoli's, um, field, and actually smaller than the original one that was at Stoli's as well. Um, with that. Um, and that is kind of the overall, uh, project wise underneath the field. Um, what you, uh, will happen is that the existing topsoil will be excavated. It will actually be, uh, relocated across the street from the high school, where the Parks and Rec, uh, currently has. Um, the, uh, town property where they store topsoil from projects. Which then allows them to be able to use it for other miscellaneous projects throughout, uh, the town, so Steve Woods will be taking that. Um, topsoil from the site, and then the town will be able to use it for various other projects. Below that, the subgrade soils are taken offsite, disposed up by the contractor. They'll then install a full storm drainage system under the field. Which will allow for the, uh, water to be collected under, and then it will be released at a. Uh, swell rate out into the existing storm system, so we are, uh, have this designed to have zero net. Uh, increase, and in fact, um, it is much better than what's there now, where it all sheet flows right off of the field. Across the track, um, during major storms. As far as the overall surfacing for the synthetic turf portion. Um, the project will have a system, uh, almost identical to what is at Stoli's Field. That was installed during the replacement of Stoli's Field, uh, I think it's three years ago now. Um, it will include a resilient shock pad for safety. Or player impact on the field below the carpet. You'll have the carpet and then the infill, which will be a combination of sand and, um. Recycled crumb rubber, uh, this crumb rubber in particular though is coated, it's coated with an acrylic coating. Which does two things, one, it reduces or limits the direct exposure to the crumb rubber, um, that, that, uh. Some folks have been worried about potential health concerns with that, but it also reduces the overall heat. Uh, of the field during those summer months, which we know can be, uh, a challenge for synthetic turf fields. Um, it accomplishes both of those, uh, with it, so. Um, the project is intended to start as soon as we gain approval, uh, from this commission and school. Uh, is completed, um, so that it will then run throughout the summer. Uh, with the majority of the construction and then trail into the fall. Um, as they complete the installation of the turf surfacing. Uh, with the hope that the field will be able to be open for the very, uh, end of the fall, uh, sport season. Towards the end of, uh, October, early November. Is the current timeframe, obviously weather depending, so. With that, I, uh, will welcome any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Yes, June?
Uh, mine is just really more just curiosity, you talked about a question of rainfall, is there any concern about capacity on that? Or, um, just. Additional information, more, like I said, out of curiosity, how that works?
Sure, so, basically, under the field, you can think of it like a bathtub. What happens is, instead of having compacted in soils, it's replaced with, uh, free draining stone. Uh, the stone is designed so within that about forty percent of that is void space, which is able to hold the water. Uh, and then there's a series of pipes which can collect it, store it. And in the outflow is actually sized down, or what we call choked. So that it can only dissipate out from under the field at a certain rate. So when you have a major storm where we get those half inch, inch or so an hour. It will all go in under the field stored in that stone. Um, and sit there, uh, during it, so it won't tax the down system or the neighbor's system. But it also is not sitting on the playing surface, so it allows you to have games or practices right after a rainstorm. Whereas natural grass stays soaking wet, um, and it sheet flows across the top and, and has to be handled on the surface.
Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Dorsey.
Um. I don't believe I heard any, um, comments with respect to, uh, public address system. Um, I don't recall there being one in the past, but is there any plan to, uh, include something like that in the future?
At this time, no, there are no, um, leechers, um, public seating press box or any, uh, audio. Um. Uh, improvements as part of this project.
Um, and does the project include a resurfacing of the track?
No, the track was actually resurfaced, I believe it was five years ago now. Um, and it has, uh, I will have to double check with Steve, but I believe it has another five years before it's due for. Uh, reconstruction, there will be as part of this project a few minor, uh, repairs. Um, that just happen over time, but because there is the grant and some funding available. Uh, we took advantage of being able to repair those few areas as part of this project.
So how is the, uh, outside track going to be protected from the work on the inside of the track?
They will construct a temporary construction bridge. Uh, what they put down is first fabric which protects the track surfacing. Um, which then is usually, uh, lined with, uh, above that is a steel plate. Followed by stone, and then depending on the equipment coming in and out, either another steel plate. Uh, or, uh, means of that, um, type. Uh, it's a, it's a standard practice we see with field constructions when the track is in place such as this. Uh, to protect the surfacing of the track.
That, um, I'll just add that that is provided for on one of the, um, plans, one of, one of the pit, um, sheets in the plan set.
Yeah, some of the sheets are not legible.
Very, they're very hard to read, and they reduced, actually it was more, even the second page, we had to ask, and that's why. He just, um, they did submit the new electronic that he's sharing, we got those because we realized. We couldn't even print them correctly from what was the original, so. Just a bad print, sorry.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else?
I, I do have one other, um, thing, as in my staff comments, of course, the, the soil erosion controls and other protective measures, et cetera. Um, but there is, I don't believe he addressed it, I didn't, um, if he did, I'm sorry for the repetition. But there's an existing sanitary sewer line that goes underneath the track, and that is, uh, yeah. That is Worthington Fire District, um, system. And any disturbance, um, should be coordinated with them, as well as protective measures put in place. Um, for it to their satisfaction, and I did check with our engineering division and, um. And water control, and they agreed with that recommendation as well, and the, um. Just note that, um, in your supplemental package, you did get the comments that included the town engineers' comments. Which are, as said, to coordinate with Worthington Fire District.
There, there's no trucks, there's no material coming on to the site, right? I know that there was a statement that Stephen would be, be, would be taking some of the top soil, soil off. But there's no trucks coming on to the site, are there?
Yes, there, there's about four thousand cubic yards of material. Uh, that's hauled out, and about three thousand cubic yards of material that's brought in as part of the progress, uh, project. Um, of that being taken out, probably about a thousand cubic yards is the topsoil that the town will keep. Um, and be able to reuse, the rest of it is, is native subsoil. Um, below, which will allow for that new drainage system to be constructed, which is that new three thousand cubic yards of material being brought in.
The, the written proposal includes that the, um, topsoil or the. Material that has to be removed in order. Material that has to be removed in order to do the construction would be. In part stockpiled most of the street at the on Patterson Way for use by the town. On town projects.
Uh, how many?
Otherwise reused around town as.
Yeah, but how many, how many dump trucks are going to be going on Patterson? Um, per day.
Four thousand isn't that much.
Well, there's four thousand going out and three thousand coming in.
Um, he, he'll have to answer that.
I'm just wondering with the traffic, how the traffic's gonna flow.
Uh, it, it's not gonna be a consistent ongoing, it, it's gonna be as they're working across, so. Um, it won't be like um a train of trucks just coming and going all the time. Uh, it also is gonna be a limited period of time each time. Uh, they will have time where they're getting to the subgrade where the materials being removed. And then there will be a period where they're constructing the new drainage system, putting the piping in. Uh, that, then there's another time where the bottom stones brought, brought in, that has to be then spread free.
That we lost him.
Lost you for one minute, I don't know if you can hear us, but it's just gonna, so hopefully you'll buffer and catch up.
I guess my concern is that I don't know the pathway, we just did Farmington Avenue over. And dump trucks can take a toll on roads. And uh, that's my concern. Well, actually, they're gonna hopefully do it during the summer. Well, it says spring too.
So.
All right, you're, you're back.
It's summer, um, with potentially into the fall. Uh, fall will most likely be the installation of the turf, so that the material at that point will be already placed in. But that is why this project is scheduled for summer, um, because of that construction activity that has to happen.
I, um, we, I would suggest, um, because that question didn't seem to be addressed, um. In the review or interdepartmental reviews, that coordination with the town engineer, public works.
Yeah, because I just.
Put it in the, um. In the motion, during the conditions and that way, he, they can help guide.
Yeah.
The location, the. Paths.
Yeah.
Roots, that's the word roots.
Yeah, exactly.
That, that would be best for them to take and as well as with coordination with the um numerous number of. Of repaving and other projects we're doing throughout town, the, that's are constantly changing which roads are accessible and which ones aren't right now.
Exactly.
All right.
Yeah, okay. All right, terrific, thank you. Any other questions? All right, what's some notion for the motion or?
I will make a motion to approve with staff comment in that the applicant works with our town engineer.
Excuse me, we do have somebody online who's asking to raise their hand.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I believe it's actually, um, Mrs. Sullivan.
All right, um, okay.
Site plan though.
This, yes.
Oh, it's not a public hearing, I'm sorry for that.
No, 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 I mean, it's late, it's tired. Because this is not a public hearing, we can't accept testimony, so. But, um, again, I, I think it's very important for us to know the pathway of these trucks. How many trucks are we coming a day, coming and going? And also. Allergies, excuse me. And just because we, we do have those new roads that have been redone. So I'll make sure that's protected too, because it's cost us a lot of money.
So I will make the motion to approve with.
Is it possible to be heard?
No.
No, it's, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, the question of lighting was not addressed.
I asked. Excuse me. I asked about the lighting, it's not public hearing, but I did ask about the lighting. And, uh.
And the, and the.
It is the same lighting and it was brought to the attention that we want the lights directed, so. Whatever portable lighting they bring in. Will be reflected away from the neighborhoods and cast down and shielded.
And shielded, he didn't, he didn't address the shielded part, so it will be shielded.
All right, in my understanding, yes.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, I will have to find out.
Um, okay, so that will, we'll look at, but I, I can't, um, all right, so we can add that to, if you want to amend the motion to. We're, take the lighting into consideration as well, I'm sorry, I need to get a lozenge, go ahead.
So item number four, I did, um, like they make the recommendation that lighting including. The future installation of permanent fixtures, which they are not.
This is very complicated.
They're proposing, um, continued use of portable fixtures. But they should be submitted for compliance with the regulations.
So that would cover that?
Do that with it being the portable lights be reviewed at compliance.
Okay.
It is what they currently use and they've done.
So I will make the motion to approve with staff comments with the fact that the applicant work with. Our town engineer on a traffic plan for the trucks. Um, and that the portable lighting, um, be reviewed for compliance. And I would also ask that, um, as part of my motion, that when the, as part of the truck traffic, that. The trucks be careful not to bang their tailgates when dumping materials.
Okay, so we have the amended motion to, uh, the second, we have the second amending?
I will second.
Okay. Then further discussion on this. Then all those in favor, I, those opposed. Thank you, so moved. Alrighty, on to the public hearings, we have the proposed amendment for the planning and zoning staff. To the Berlin zoning regulation section eleven D D planned residential infill development. This is an ongoing, um, I think we're in the last leg of this. Um, we've had much discussion, we've had maps and everything and it comes down to. Um, last we left off, did we, were we looking, we were weighing the difference between five units per acre versus. Six units per acre, and I think that's exactly where it sits, so. Yes, staff.
So I have provided you with a little packet, I told you that we do my best to.
Yes.
Pull together a lot of the information that you've already received, of course, everything you received and you've heard. Public hearings on this matter are still part of the record, but this is kind of a summary and pulling together everything I could. Um, that would be good to have in kind of a wrap-up package. The um first page of the package is the proposed first. Clip is the proposed text amendment with the red light edits right up until today. Um, and through the last hearings, I guess I should say, so. Um, to re-describe it for the benefit of everyone, the bold and underlined text is new text. The crop, the strike through text is deleted. The red text is, is so that's. The, the, you know, black, bold and, and, and underlined and strike through is. The original, um, staff text amendment that you started looking at. Red is where you've gone through some of the discussions and talked about. Adding or subtracting and those are then the lighter red. Um, that. Didn't end up being, being it.
Yeah.
And so the dark bold red, um, and the dark black. Um, bold black are the new text with the strike through as shown. Throughout in the second packet and we can go through it. Um, change at a time if you'd like, but the second packet is the. Basic background on the, the, some of the reasoning that I've, um, understood. To be, um, where this is coming from, where it's going and what the, the goal, some of the goals were and. Um, staff comments, things for you to think about when you're evaluating whether this is the text that you want to adopt. Um, including, um, thinking about our housing stock as discussed during. Affordable housing plan, the update process and this, the testimony that you've heard over time in relation to. Um. To, um, text amendments on housing. Um, and specifically on this and then the, um. The biggest addition here, I, we did talk about it at one of the meetings, but it. Um, I didn't have, I don't believe I had something to distribute to you at the time, but it is what the current. Um. Zoning is as far as the bulk table or each of the properties or the zones, the properties are in. What the existing. Eleven, I wrote nine D D, that should say eleven D D, I'm sorry. Um, existing eleven D D tax and the proposed amendments to that tax. And then, um, I put another chart in which summarizes what some of the densities are. Um, in multifamily, that provides for multifamily in different areas of town. To just give you a benchmark and that's a way for you to, if you possibly looked at any of the projects. Anything, you know, okay, that was OT, so that was, you know. Two point five units per acre or, you know.
Yep.
Um. Uh, each, each zone. Um, and so that's what that is, the, um, the. Third packet is the minutes of each of the hearings related to this item. A couple of them are still in draft form, but they are the page each highlighted, just the, the data's at the top. Just so everybody could come up to speed, remember what, what was discussed or refresh their memory and. Um, a reminder that all the. Apes are on YouTube library link for planning and zoning commission meetings is easily accessible, but I can lead you to the link if you need to.
Maureen, the plan, um, residential infill development, this is a special permit, correct?
Yes.
It's always a special permit, okay, good, because I didn't see it.
Um, I think.
Specifically.
In the.
Mentioned there, but I just wanna make sure, yeah, usually they do have them pretty early.
I think it's in procedure.
Okay.
The.
You know, page two.
For a planned residential infill development use.
Uh, thank you.
Land that meets the standards set forth in section DD. Must be approved as a special permit pursuant to section eleven of these regulations.
Okay.
Permit section, and again, there's no change actually to that.
You guys do a good job with this.
Reads right now, and then this, um, packet is the map packet.
Yeah.
We distributed back in February and it shows each motel site. Second page that, that exists, the second page is just the zoning of that motel site, but we put the. Uh, current setbacks and in plan a metric view, you can see the outline of the building. Now, remember, it's not scalable, it is the GIS, but it's reasonably accurate to approximate distances. And so therefore it is a depiction, it's not a survey.
Yeah.
Caveat there and the last two pages in that pack go, no, actually it's a separate packet. That's the side that got separatedly is the map that you got, that was distributed. When you first considered the amendment.
Yeah.
Um, that. Added this text to the regulations in the first place back in twenty-one, but then it's been distributed again with this proposal. Um, it's the map that shows in a little blue dot each of the motels along the burn term height. Um, a reminder that they are a non-conforming use and then the chart of how many units are in each one. And the lot sizes, et cetera. Now that is all information that we tried to put on this sheet. So at the top where you see here, this grid is one oh two Berlin turnpike. Um, it's sixteen units, you find the fifteen units on the chart. We put it's one point four nine acres, you find the one point four nine acres on the chart, but we tried to. Make it easy.
No, yeah.
Might have made it more confusing, but.
Nah, you're fine.
You know, kinda tried to do what we could. Um. Uh, you'll see right at the beginning of my comments. My first recommendation is that if you've settled or you, you read through this text and you think. You know, it's pretty reflective of what you really wanna, um. Follow up with that we then post this text. One last time before you close the hearing, so that it's posted. Um, because it's been modified enough from the first posting of it. And then you close the hearing after the public's had time to have it posted till the next.
Wow.
Would be my recommendation, um, as far as your very first question about the units per acre. It was my understanding that at the last meeting and you'll see on page two in three A. Um, I understood you to settle on the six dwelling units per acre or the consensus being.
That's fine.
Write it that way.
Yeah.
Six, um, again, public hearing's not closed, you know. Be true and. Study it.
Okay, wow.
But that was, um, where we hit there, um, the one thing I wasn't sure, um. Specifically where you landed was the eighteen feet in height, one and a half stories and eighteen feet in height for structures. Um, and.
I, I think that's measured to the peak, correct?
No.
Midway.
Would be halfway up.
So, so that's about.
Height is measured.
That's about right. I think that's about right.
And I did put in the, um. In the comments section where I do have the bulk comparisons, I put. Um, what the height allowed in some of the other zones are. Not all the zones, um, for instance, I'm pretty much, there's very few zones that height is different than. Two and a half stories and thirty-five feet, that's pretty standard in the residential zones, the industrial trail and the, um, there's one that's. Um, oh, the SPDD has a very high height limit.
All right, what do you, uh, how do you feel about this? Should we go ahead and, um. Give it our blessing and, I mean, it seems like we have everything unless somebody, has anyone? Anything that we're missing at this point, we'll look those.
Any further edit of the.
Yeah, Andrea, go.
Um. Being under minimum setback. For the rear, it says forty-three when a buddy in the residential, twenty-five, like anonymous residential. What happens when it's a large parcel land behind a motel? That hasn't been. Poached the zone at this point, that the town would be.
Well, that would be the zone, so it's a residential zoned parcel, not a residential use parcel. So if there's a non-conforming residential use or, or, or something, then. That the regulation doesn't address that, the regulation actually is just affecting what the zone line. Behind it, so you'll look the in, um. And that's why, um. It's not on that one. Um. Go to, here we go, the third, if you go to the second set, which is one seventy-six Berlin turnpike.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that one in the, it has R fifteen. Is the zone that's behind it, you can see the little blue dotted line behind it. That's an R fifteen zone and the R fifteen zone has a forty foot setback in that location. So that's what we were trying to depict when we put that is. Um, and Dylan worked tirelessly on these, I might add, while I was out sick, so that was exciting to have done. But we tried to put what that adjacent zone was for each of the parcels. And I think that was actually at the request of the chair, um, to know. What are their setback, what are they, and how are you comparing the where the setback would be to them? And some of them are side yards and some of them are rear yards, does depend on where they are.
Or to go ahead and accept this, then we would just have to schedule it for a public hearing then.
This is the public hearing, what, what I'm suggesting is we post the.
Yes.
As a final black bold and strikeout of the, um, of the existing. Approved text that's in place.
Mm-hmm.
Take the, the, um. The black bold, it's new text.
Clean it up.
Out as, yeah, forget the red, clean it all up, it's a black.
And then see how it reads.
Strikeout and post it.
Yeah.
So that the public can see a clean copy of the edited version that you'll be.
Okay.
You do have.
Oh, okay. But no, stop, be sorry.
I, um. Maureen, maybe you can see, um, I was trying to think back to our conversations, did we have in here listed the, the distance between the homes? Or the facilities, because we had, but the small homes, it was ten feet, okay.
Moved it from ten, I had originally.
Twenty feet.
Envisioned twenty as, you know, little bustries, but then at your
Thank you, I was looking for it.
There is, that's all right, we all get tired, we all get late and
Up to the twenty feet between units, and we, I did ask that the language of the area between the units landscape, but they include pedestrian path, pathways and fence storage for the limited size, kind of giving that limited size of the fence storage, not
So would you like us to keep this open so you can do a final draft of this new text amendment? Or can we close the public hearing and do that?
No, we can't, yeah.
Post it, clean, if public has any comments on it, they have clarity as to what they're
They're getting.
Consider.
Okay.
What they're looking at and what you're considering.
How's, how's the commission feel about that?
Again, I'm
That's an excellent idea.
Yep, won't argue.
I'm going to be reading on this tomorrow in the car. Okay, yes, okay, so we need a motion on that, just to go ahead.
No further
No further, yeah.
Immediately, that does not preclude you from making further edits during the, you know, before you close the public hearing, but, or in your deliberation, finer, but it does at least.
So the motion is to, well, yeah, I don't, is anyone, anyone on Zoom land wish to address the commission regarding this application, that would be the time to talk. All right, hearing on.
And I'll go ahead and make the motion to continue until our next meeting.
And with the, okay, with the direction?
Which is June
Fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
Okay, and that will be, so we can post the clean version of it. And then that's it, but we have this as a readthrough. Okay, we have a second.
I seconded.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jersey, for the discussion, all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so moved. Old business. Okay, thank you, Stephen. We have a zone application change for Ralph Ed Hayek, member C R L, Hayek LLC, to change the map, the zone map for sixteen dash one block one oh six, this is all continued. And we have to make a decision by seven twenty-two. I could read this whole thing, but I know Fran's probably thinking, get on with it. All right, so under the old business, we have this, we have a, a request to do a zone change. And it's basically going from a BT two to the BT one. Right, Berlin? Yep, okay, so BT two to BT one, but I mean, it's up, this is a zone change, and I know that we're in the middle of the plan of conservation and development, so I just asked the commission. How do we feel about this proposal? Anyone want to start?
I guess I'll start. I'm not opposed to it, I know that when we were talking, the Economic Development Commission was for it. And we also found that we could still keep the SPD D two overlay intact. So I think that would be, if we did decide to go in favor of the zone change, I do think we should keep it with the the overlay that keeps it to a higher criteria of project.
Okay. Anyone else, I mean, other comments?
I agree with Commissioner Rogan, I like the idea of increasing the development opportunities along that part of the turnpike. It's been a long time that nothing has happened. I know there was some discussion at one of the meetings about limiting development to the eastern side of the stream that cuts through there, and that's something I think we should consider in future meetings, but I don't think that that should be a limiting factor in this particular case. And I think it should be considered for future expansion once the P O C D is passed.
Yeah, I guess that, I guess that's my hesitancy, is that I'm waiting on this P O C D, and I want to see how that's going to fall, put everything into place. So actually, I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence again. Because I'm, I'm all for waiting for the P O C D, and I don't, I don't see a compelling argument here for us to race and rush and change another zone where we might be better off just looking at the overall impact to see if there's anything else, or maybe there's even some other better way of doing business, I don't know, I just, it seems, it seems that we're taking piecemeal here. And we keep, we keep doing this to ourselves, and we, instead of having an overhaul, overall cohesive plan, it seems that we keep just a little here, a little there, a little here, and I, I just, I would like to just step back and let the P O C D play out, or we're at, we're at the end of it, so. And it's not much further down the pike where it'll be just one big decision, so. But that's my feedback, anyone else? Okay, so do we? All right, so we want to have a motion, anyone want to make a motion? I know, I know, I'm trying, it's really hard.
You make the, with, with your comments.
Steve has something to say, excuse me, Diane, Steve, Biella, did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
No?
I will add that I have him as not seated on this item.
Oh, okay. So who is seated? Oh. Oh, I, that's, that's my, that's my error, I'm sorry, it's, it's late, it's been a long day. This is what I'm trying to avoid, is these big long meetings. Okay, I thank you for that, so Steve, you're, you're not seated on this item, but I can ask. Okay, so do you have a comment? Yes, no, maybe?
You know, I think the argument to convert it to the B two one was compelling, in my opinion, I would vote for this.
So is that your motion?
I make a motion to approve the zone change application, as stated, item ten A.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Ms. Jersey, so do we have further discussion?
Yes, I would be wondering if you guys would be willing to amend your motion to add in the SPD D two overlay stay, so that we have that higher, you know, quality of project in the future.
Well, that's, I agree that that should stay.
Okay, so I hear the second amended, is your motion amended?
I would actually ask you, Commissioner, I think you should make the motion to amend my motion. I think that's, that would be in order, because I wouldn't be in favor of that, but certainly.
So you would now, okay.
I wouldn't do that, but obviously I'll leave it to you, if you wish to try to amend my motion, that would be in order.
But wouldn't you withdraw?
No, I wouldn't withdraw, no.
No?
He would, he could amend, he could.
Okay.
So it's like you're raising.
Yeah, I'm not going to propose you out, certainly, if you want.
All right, so now, Mr. Rogan.
I'll make the motion to amend Mr. Dyken's motion to add that it also include that the SPD D two overlay stay intact.
And I'll second.
Okay, so now Okay.
We're voting on Commissioner Rogan's motion to amend.
Okay. So all good, all right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, aye?
Aye.
All right, so the motion to amend, the motion carries, so now now the amended motion is with the overlay, basically to approve with the overlay of the SPD D, correct? Well, now is the step, now's the step for the zone change.
We still in conversation, or are we not in conversation?
Can we?
We can be in conversation, did you have a conversation?
I just had a question.
Okay.
If that'd be okay, because
Sure.
Commissioner you had mentioned that the P O C D is important, it's a process. In the process of that committee, did they look at different zone or zone changes similar to like this parcel?
Well, basically, we can make recommendations, and we're working on the zoning now in the P O C D. So we can make recommendations to change specific zones. And, and then that can be put into the, to the book, and of course, that goes out to the public hearing, so that's that's the whole thing, is that we're sort of, there's two races happening here. So go.
Right now, with your, the zoning analysis is being worked on, I don't believe that the S V D D area, S V D two, et cetera, is at the top priority of the analysis.
Yeah, but we've only gone through
Looked at.
Yeah, but I think we've only gone through half of the presentation, correct? If I, if my memory serves, are we right, we haven't got
Certain things, and the affordable housing and housing
Yeah.
Newer zones along the term type of B T D, the mixed-use zone are the focus
Yeah.
Of that zoning analysis, it's not a comprehensive zoning rewrite of our regulations and with recommendations for the regulations in the entirety. So I'm concerned that you think you may be getting a report specifically with regard to the area that may not be forthcoming in this round.
Well, that's, that's true, but I mean, it does not eliminate the ability for the commission to look at the overall parcels or parcels that could be affected by this, by this thing, so, I mean
And the P O C D, of course, addresses a corridor
Yeah.
General and the commercial zones.
Yeah.
You know, the vision and the
So if you weren't confused before, you definitely can be confused now. All right, so the, the whole thing is we're voting on the motion to change the zone now. And, and if the motion goes forward, it's the amended motion, so it goes with the overlay as well, so. Did you have something else?
No.
Anyone else have something else, everyone clear? All right, now, that's no problem, so all those in favor of the zone change?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Oh. All right, I, I was opposed. Sure. Oh, you didn't vote? Oh, okay, okay. No, 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 so, okay, so the well, we're gonna, we're gonna
You vote, don't worry about our vote.
Yeah, don't worry about the vote, you just, you vote what's, what's in your heart, in your head, which your gut instinct. That's what you have to take into consideration. As you it's your gut instinct, there's no right or wrong, it's your gut instinct, yes, all right, yeah. It's for this particular parcel, yeah, so show a hands, all those in favor, show your hands of the zone change. And those opposed?
No, no, I took my hand out, I just, I lingered.
Well, it's, yeah. I, myself. So did the motion carry? Four to three, so simple majority, there you go. Yeah. All right, so that's done, okay, get that off the charts. All right, and then a proposed amendment, the planning, okay, so now the refill that's going to be going out to the excuse me, the refill goes out to June fif, it gets carried to June fifteenth, right? And infill, refill, infill, I'm sorry. I've been up since, I, I know, I've been up since, never mind, anyway. All right, so to avoid any questions tomorrow morning on the phone, Maureen, did you get?
I had you sign the MyLard at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, you did. All right. So that's the only
Having anything else to do with that?
Yeah.
I, that's, I tried to reserve.
I can call for a motion to adjourn at nine fifty, nine, ten o'clock. All right, motion by Ms. Jersey to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, that was from Mr. Dyken, further discussion, all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so moved. Good night, Stephen, thank you.